All the city of Kiwanee Common Council meeting for Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five to order. Let the record show all members are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item four, meeting in compliance with the open meetings law this meeting is. Item five, motion to approve or make changes the order of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I will reapprove. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item six, motion to adopt the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That was the August eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Item seven, consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance. A, general bills. Do I have a motion to approve the general bills?
Move that in the, uh, the group bill, August twenty twenty five, check register.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Conley?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Hafteal?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
Blaha?
Yep.
Jean-Court?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven B, financial reports. Seven C, conference attendance, none? Claims, none? Item eight, public comment. Uh, anyone wishes to speak on our public comment? There's a three-minute time limit per person. You can step to the podium, state your name and your address. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak under public comment this evening? Sure, please step forward. Thank you.
Hello. Uh, I'm Stacy Weems. I'm at five twenty-one Miller Street here in Kiwanee. Uh, I just wanted to talk about promotional support animals.
Go right ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I want to talk about emotional support animals, also known as ESAs, and how they're protected under Wisconsin law and federal law. This is my request for a reasonable accommodation for my disabled young adult son to have chickens as an ESA. Now, so I want to note, I have multiple letters from his medical team stating his need with them for his health and well-being. ESAs help individuals manage numerous conditions and offer companionship, dignity, and support to their health. Because of this, the law ensures that people with, who need ESAs are protected in housing. In Wisconsin, these protections are found in Wisconsin statute one oh six point five zero, the state's fair housing law. Under section one oh six point five zero two R B R, it is considered discrimination if a person is denied housing, evicted, cited, or harassed because of their disability-related need for an ESA. This doesn't just apply to apartments or rentals. It also applies to single-family homes, condos, and even city-controlled housing. So if someone has proper documentation, they cannot be forced out of their home or denied ESA simply because of their need. Importantly, these protections also extend to cities and municipalities. Government entities are required to make the same reasonable accommodations as private landlords. This means that local ordinances like no animals or rules that blanket pet bans must give way when a resident has a documented disability-related need for an ESA. Housing providers in cities also cannot restrict ESA based on breed, weight, or size. It's not just about dogs or cats. ESAs can be other species too. If a licensed medical or mental health professional determines that a particular animal provides necessary emotional support, then the animal qualifies. Believe it or not, this includes chickens. If a professional says chickens are essential for a disability providing emotional well-being, and they provide documentation from a licensed physician or healthcare provider, then chickens can legally serve as an ESA under both state and federal housing law. All of the, this aligns with the Federal Fair Housing Act, which prohibits housing discrimination nationwide. The FHA requires both private and public housing providers, including city governments, to adjust their rules, ordinances, or zoning practices if those rules interfere with a person's right to keep the ESA in their home. In conclusion, Wisconsin law recognizes how important ESAs are for people with disabilities. By requiring accommodations in single-family housing, ensuring that cities follow the same rules, the law protects individual rights and promotes fairness. These protections allow people with disabilities to live independently with dignity and the support of their ESA, whether it's a dog, a cat, a horse, or even chickens, and the list goes on. Thanks so much for listening to my request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on a public comment this evening? Please come up.
Well, Paul Scott, eleven oh one Milwaukee. Well, I've been to a couple of meetings, but I gotta tell you, I really hope told you folks, you know, for keeping this small town together, because I know a lot of you are just on stippens and you put a lot of stuff together for this town. And I do appreciate it. I think a lot of people do, and I want to tell you thank you because I know it can be a big thankless probably. So ever onward, okay?
Thank you. All right, anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment this evening? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Item nine, boards, commissions, committee reports, and staff reports. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the staff's reports and place on file? Accept and place on file the staff reports?
We'll read that. No, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Nine B, committee, board, and commission reports. Do I have a motion to accept and place on file?
Make that motion.
No, I'll say it.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Uh, in the personnel committee, I found a couple of typos. Under the motion to adopt the meeting minutes, Bobby's name spelled incorrectly, just inconsistently with another part of the agenda. Little farther down in old business, uh, it says Ned and Bobby both commented they would be will to exist in the interviews. I'm assuming that means willing. And then under new business, it just says brainstorm on developing a plan on employee engagement and moral ideas. I think that's supposed to be morale. So. So tweaking a hunt.
I've had those minutes.
All right, I'll take, I'll take, uh, credit for that.
The moral ideas just like flagging, not gonna find the one that's about.
Any further discussion on that? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor to accept and place on file the committee board and commission reports signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item ten, mayor's report. Uh, I would like to put my condolences out to the Dan Brown family. Uh, Kathy Brown, you and your family. Kathy, of course, was a councilperson here, uh, not that long ago. Uh, Dan was very active in the community and of course, uh, well-known for Brown Fest and, uh, also doing the fireworks, uh, on July the third. Uh, fantastic fireworks displayed between the ground show, the aerials, and everything else. And, uh, again, my heartfelt sympathy goes out to Kathy Brown and her family, so the loss of Dan. Uh, item eleven, old business. Is there any old business? Hearing none? Item twelve, new business. Twelve A, approve addendum number twenty-three dash two to the agreement for professional services with Cedar Corporation the amount of five thousand three hundred dollars for the preparation of a bathymetric survey for the Kiwanee Marina and Boat Launch.
Yeah, this is, um, this actually was recommended by the Marina Committee. Uh, we are engaged in a process of improving us down in the Marina. Uh, part of that is the dock replacements, but part of that also is the fact that it's gotten noticeably shallower. And so we're trying to deal with addressing that by doing some dredging, which hasn't been done down there in over twenty years. Um, part of the problem is that we were getting estimates, uh, ranging around six hundred thousand dollars, but we had no idea what we were getting as a, with, um, an estimate for. It was assumed there were a bunch of assumptions being made in those assessments, and so we, uh, suggested that I, you know, reached out to Cedar Corp to find out if they could do bathymetric survey, which is literally doing the, it's like a land survey but underwater, to create a topographic map of what it looks like underwater, and that is a bad basis to plan how much you actually want to drill it. So you have a better idea as to what that looks like. The proposal that they submitted includes an image that shows that the, the, the limits extent would be from the southern, the, the breakout on, on, uh, Fisherman's Point on the southern end to the western end would be just west of the boat launch area. And they're proposing to do that with a total cost of, of fifty-three hundred dollars. As I mentioned, Marina Committee supported the recommendation.
Any questions on that?
I have a question. Is that, uh, is that to be done this year, or is this budgeted for next year? Or is this something we should budget for, for next year?
Uh, my understanding is they intended to, do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, my understanding was it was gonna be trying to be done this year.
Yep.
So we can get ready for twenty twenty-seven, because that was our goal in twenty twenty-seven to get the docks in. So we want to get that done as soon as possible.
Just a thought before we launch any votes. UWM's College of Freshwater Sciences has been pretty regularly doing surveys of all of the Lake Michigan harbors. And I was down there in May, and they said Kiwanee's has been done. So I'm wondering if we could just, before we do it, check and see if they have data that's already current enough.
Interesting. Do you have a contact?
I do.
Uh, do you wanna share that with John?
Okay, sounds good. Because they're also interested. Part of the research they're doing it is that how the changing lake levels actually affect the land around like our harbors and our rivers and things like that, so they're trying to really keep it up to date.
So John, is, is this something that can be tabled until we get further information, or would we?
Well, I think we can probably authorize it and see what, and, I mean, we don't have to spend the money right away, but.
We can authorize this.
Authorize it, but we don't have to, we don't have to spend the money. I mean, we can wait to see if they've got that, so.
And I mean, it might be a matter of, like, Cedar Corp still needs to massage the data that they can get from UWM for our purposes, but it might save actually having to go out.
And we don't know the exact scope of what they surveyed.
Correct.
Assuming what they're saying is accurate, that they did something, um. Could this, could this not be brought back next month?
Yeah.
Well, you, you could if you want, um. It'll, yeah, it'll, it'll slow you down a little bit, but I, I guess it, it's up to you if you want it, because it's entirely possible that the data they gave you stops. Stop, stops at the, um, I, I don't know how far they went. That's part of our problem. We don't know that.
We'll make a motion to table this until next month so we know what they have.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I, I think if we're gonna be doing it this year, um, with the timeline, I, I'm not sure the conversation was held with the Marina Committee. And if we were to authorize this based on what data the, the UW actually has, um. I don't know, John, do you wanna weigh in?
I, you know, I, our, uh, the path we want to take was to have this done as soon as possible. If it could be done this year, I suppose, you know, we would probably do it. But, you know, the goal was to have this authorized, so if we want, if we needed to go ahead with it, we can go ahead with it.
Could we? Could we approve? No, let's see. Could we approve the finance part of it? So that if it turns around tomorrow, we get confirmation that UWM does not have the data we need, that we could proceed? But.
Right, I, I, I don't see a problem in why we can't proceed with.
Because I support them.
Approving the, the financing.
They just don't wanna duplicate data that's already available.
If we, if we approve it right now, we're committed to spend this fifty-three hundred dollars.
We're not, well, we're, we're, we're not committed. You're approving it, not, you're not committing and saying, well, we are going, you're approving the expenditure to spend, but that doesn't mean, when you say committed, that doesn't mean that we have to go out and spend the money. That's committed.
Well, if we take, if, if we weren't.
Moving this, that would be approved.
Sure, but if we're gonna make the motion authorizing the expenditure, it's authorizing expenditure, and we would give the authority to the Marina Committee to spend it if the data that comes back from UW is not sufficient. Obviously, that data would have to be looked at by our engineers, which is Cedar Corp. And maybe it would reduce the scope of what Cedar Corp needs to do, which would reduce its money. So this would be up to fifty-three hundred dollars at the discretion of the Marina Committee.
I can agree with the up to.
Up to.
That's why it says fifty-three hundred.
Yeah, and so that data then, if we can get that uh, to Heath, to Brandon, and, uh, that'll come back to the Marina Committee. You guys would have to have a meeting then.
Forward it onto Art, Art as the chairman.
And then, uh, maybe it'll decrease the scope of what Cedar Corp needs to survey. So if anything else, it would be, I mean, we know we need to do it. And it's just a matter of, yeah, if we don't need to duplicate anything, then obviously that would be a cost saving. So, um, having said all that, there is a motion and a second to table this. And if we wish to go to a different, uh, motion, we can, uh, have this motion fail. So at this time, uh, we have a motion to table in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. So it is up for a motion to.
Very. Motion failed.
That motion failed.
That was failed. I'll move that we.
Approve addendum twenty-three dash two with Cedar Corporation in the amount of up to fifty-three hundred dollars for the preparation of a bathymetric survey for the Marina and Boat Launch. That was your motion.
The motion is up to fifty-three hundred dollars, depending upon what data is available through UWM.
Sure, and authorizing the Marina Committee to move forward as such.
And authorizing the committee, Marina.
Okay.
Okay, move on that data.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Although, uh, any, uh, further discussion? Please call a roll.
Conley?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Hafteal?
Aye.
House?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Blaha?
Yes.
Jean-Court?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you for that. Um, twelve B, adopt an event policy and application.
Um, a lot of the stuff that you end up getting is stuff like what's gonna appear on agenda two items later, um, where somebody comes in or requests to close the street for an hour, or close the street for a parade, or do this or that. At the suggestion of, uh, staff helping us from Algoma, it was thought that a better way to do this would be to just create a, a policy where certain types of things like this would be evaluated by staff and then authorized by staff, and then you would avoid having to bring them up here, which ultimately, not so much from a standpoint of authorization or authority, it slows down the process for them or requires them to come in a lot earlier than maybe they would normally think about coming in. So that they can get it for you, get it approved, so that they can then execute their plans that sometimes include a lot of other things moving along. So what we have in front of us is a draft policy based in significant part on the policy that Algoma currently uses. The policies that, in my opinion, is a more effective way to address the current council adoption process without a clunky approval section. It requires checks and balances, requires people to be aware of certain things that they have to account for. The application form is fairly comprehensive, so they have to account for those things in their ask. And then, uh, it's evaluated by staff. Uh, there is a administrative fee of twenty-five dollars, which will institute, if approved, to be requesting to implement as of now. And then, uh, we review the fee requirement later on if adjustments are necessary. And, oh, and Public Works Committee reviewed this last week and recommended approval with the additional twenty-five dollar administrative fee. And review of the, the adjustments as we go forward.
Yeah, one thing, just an additional thing from Public Works is that one thing that was different about Kiwanee's policy, is that it includes a part where if your, like, your event involves closure of a road, and that road closure affects businesses or people, it requires the person applying to get signatures of the people on that block or that would be. So we kind of then address issues where we don't have to necessarily go out and knock on doors to make sure it's okay with everybody. That's already done.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the event policy and application and set the fee for the application at twenty-five dollars.
I'll move.
Any discussion? Let's call a roll.
Conley?
Yes.
Mills?
Aye.
Hafteal?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
Blaha?
Yep.
Jean-Court?
Aye.
Motion carried. Well, C, wastewater utility reed bed cleanout proposals for twenty twenty-five.
Wastewater Utilities looking for approval to execute cleanout disposal of materials from reed beds used for processing sewage. Uh, there are six beds located on the Fingers property, and periodically utility is required to clean out two beds, continuing to ensure capacity is available and compliance with T and R requirements. Waste water operator reached out to possible vendors, conduct this work, and received two proposals, um, which are attached. And they include Jaden Incorporated of Luxembourg at forty-two thousand and Peters Concrete in Green Bay at fifty thousand five hundred. These proposals reflect the cost of the collection and hauling of the materials to the collection facility operated by Waste Management out of White Law, which charges a tipping fee of twenty-five dollars per tonne total, which is twenty-one dollars for the disposal, plus two dollars for an energy surcharge, plus two dollars for what we like to them. Depending on the actual weighted volume, the total tipping fee costs could run from eighteen thousand seven fifty up to thirty thousand dollars. The ultimate cost, of course, is going to depend on how heavy it is, how much water gets pulled out before it gets sent. So how much of that is actual material versus how much of it is water? It's gonna depend greatly on what the tipping fee actually turns out to be. So as I noted in my memo, this cost could run anywhere from six thousand seven fifty to maybe up to eighty thousand five hundred, uh, which I think is higher than it's been, but the fees have all gone up too. Proposals should be the same in terms of overall service cost. Um, I did note, however, that, uh, Logan's estimate was up to seven hundred fifty tons, and Jaden's actually translates as about twelve hundred tons. So he's assuming it's gonna be more waterborne than we do. Anyway, the Public Works Committee reviewed the item last week and recommended selecting the proposal from Jaden Incorporated. Funding would come from the Fund Six Twenty Maintenance, but.
Any discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve the Jaden Incorporated proposal for the Reed Bed Cleanout Project in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars plus cost of tipping fees. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Conley?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Hafteal?
Aye.
House?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Blaha?
Aye.
Jean-Court?
Aye.
Motion carried. Twelve D, approve closure for Ellis Street between Milwaukee Street and Main Street for a Christmas parade on Friday, November twenty-one, from six-thirty PM until the end of the parade.
Uh, yeah, this is the last time you'll be doing one of these, hopefully. We received a request to close Ellis Street, uh, in that one block for a Christmas parade to be held on Friday, November twenty-first, starting approximately six-thirty PM. Staff would bring the, the barriers out, and they would install the barriers, and then when it's all done, they'll pull it back off this, off the street, and then things will occur. Uh, we'll reopen. Um, it also includes no parking along the street to ensure visibility from location participants. Public Works reviewed this last week and also recommended forwarding council program.
Do I have a motion to approve the closure for the Ellis Street between Milwaukee Street and Main Street for a Christmas parade on Friday, November twenty-one, from six-thirty PM until the end of the parade?
I will read that.
No, second.
Any discussion?
One of the things that came up in the discussion was all that angle parking on that block. There was a lot of concern about kids running out between the cars, like, people are throwing candy and stuff like that. So that kind of sealed it for me. We don't want those cars in there that ma- make it hard to see people darting out.
And we always try to tell everybody in the parade not to throw the candy, have people on the ground handing it or whatever, or at least, yeah, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Twelve E, population estimate as of January one, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, this is a new feature I'm bringing in. Uh, the D O A issues population estimates at the state, county, and local area annually as of January one. Uh, for twenty twenty-five, population estimate for the city of Kiwanee is now twenty-two thousand seven ninety-six, which is a reduction of forty-one persons from the twenty-twenty census. I'm offering this to you in case you would like to challenge. Um, city would need to submit the challenge by the deadline of September fifteenth, which is next Monday. Uh, I did put in the analysis the prior estimates that have been submitted since, or, well, since January one, twenty twenty, including them, and then the census, and then the last four years, just for your reference. Um, except for the one where it went up by one, uh, we've mostly been going slightly down. So.
I'm just curious, how would you challenge that?
Well, you can just simply say, tell them they're wrong, because what, what they're really doing is. They, well, because what they typically do when they do these estimates is that they do something like shift share, which means that if the county itself is declining, or if a company, uh, they basically do it on the basis of past practice. So if you've been going down, they just assume you're gonna keep going down, so they don't assume any other changes. And unless we had all of a sudden a fifty on an apartment building going in, we're not gonna see a huge population increase. So they're sort of looking at a couple of those things happening, and basing on those things, they, they just make those, so.
Just curious.
We can challenge. I don't know how successful challenges are. It's not been my experience that they're particularly helpful, but you can if you want.
Sure. Just curious.
Any other discussion on twelve E? Great. On a thirteen, agenda items for next meeting, Keith? I think at this time.
Um, well, other, no, uh, nothing that I can think of right at the moment, but we may bring something up soon.
Eight. Fourteen, uh, next meeting date, October thirteen, twenty twenty-five, at six PM City Hall. Uh, there are meeting reminders under A. I'm not gonna read them all. That's all that we have on that. So item fifteen. Motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved, and one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require to close session. Next steps for case number twenty-four dash C V dash six four, City of Kiwanee versus D Kaiseri LLC, and unknown residents of three fifteen Bleach Street, four seventeen Ellis Street, nine eleven Ellis Street, five oh two Miller Street, and four eighteen Beardsley Street. And case number twenty-four dash C V dash six five, D Kaiseri LLC versus City of Kiwanee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
No. No, second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Hafteal?
Aye.
House? Brewster?
Aye.
Blaha?
Aye.
Jean-Court?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are now in closed session. Any council members wish to take a minute? Uh, free to do so at this time.
I'm wondering if we could request an A to stay.
Uh, Nathan? One second. Uh, we can. Uh, does anyone have an objection to Nathan staying? Is there reason?
Uh, yeah, there is. There will be.
Okay, I don't think any of the girls, do we? Are we off?
Should. Feeling shut down.
I, I think we should be okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.